All right, good evening. I'd like to call the December 5th, 2022 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. Mayor PJ Conley, I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. Please join me for the invocation, which will be a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Right. Mayor Conley, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommend changes?
I have no changes, Mayor.
May I just approve?
Second.
All right, I got a motion to approve by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in this order, register until the allot of 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allot of 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. Robert O'Neil. Mr. O'Neil, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
How you doing? I come here to give y'all suggestions of trying to make town commons more safer. I talked to the city manager at Greenville Gibbs last week, and she told me to go ahead and come up here and speak about it. As you know, with my son, we go to a lot of events, whether we work it or if we don't work it, you know, we're downtown at the town commons a lot. And in the process of this, I've seen a lot of people never get hit by vehicles. So my suggestion, because I know most, the majority of the time, the speed limit on that road needs to be 35. My question is, you know, maybe the city could get a grant or something, or come up with some money somewheres to where, when there is a event there, you have flashing lights, caution signs, you know, and maybe a sign that says special event, speed limit 25, and slow it down for those events. You know, you look at the concerts down there, Sunday in the park, all the festivals that you have, you know, that place is just gonna keep getting boomer and boomer and boomer even more so. And you're gonna have more foot traffic out there, and then a lot of these events are at night, you know, and 35 miles an hour, you got food trucks on First Street, you know, for these concerts and everything, you know, if it's 35, people gonna run 45, and it's not safe, you know. So come up with that idea, maybe, you know, that you could do something like that, just during events, have lights, drop speed limit to 25, you know, maybe we'll save the life.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And thank you for taking time to come here to talk to us about that. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Lenora. Ms. Lenora, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Congressman John Lewis says to start good trouble. I'm here to start some good trouble. Call the truth. You know how I've been here. My first initial visit was here. So I did a little research, and I went to the county commission's office and asked who oversees the sheriff department. I was told that their sheriff department has no overseer. And I said, are you kidding me? They don't have an overseer. I set a position of that magnitude, and no one oversees the sheriff. That's the answer I received. Social Security still refuses to restore my rights to take up my married maiden name. I've done all that they asked me to do, and they refuse to give me back my married name. Now, you have, he just gave you a paper, of the person that I was married to. You see what his diagnosis is. I worked in mental health for 13 years, and I was married to it for 13 years. That person is one of the persons that I shared with your city manager of the two persons that I know of live in Pitt County who's involved in the death of other people. That's the truth with the information that I know. The second person, I told him, this person hacked, tracked, steal, kill, destroy, forge, embezzle, change, amend, fabricate people records for money. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm a law-abiding citizen. Haven't broken any law, but I'm hacked and I'm tracked, and I'm treated as if I'm the one that's diagnosed. Well, you can't have that diagnosis married to a person. It's not like an STD. It's transmitted. It doesn't work like that. I worked in it for 13 years, I know. You see this? This is a recording of people trying to set me up because I left organized religion, and I saw enough crimes that I sent people to prison. I stepped out of it. But what happened is, they called me to set me up, and they didn't hang the phone up, and my phone recorded what they was doing and saying on the other end. This recording can tell Greenville.
And that's time?
At some point, we all choose whether to be on the wrong side of the wrong or on the right side. I'm not gonna be treated like a second-class citizen if I've broken a law. Charge me. But I'm not gonna stop until I get my maiden name back in some justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lenora. All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
There are no more additional signed-up speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seen none. We'll close the public comment period. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items: a resolution authorizing the filing of an application to the United States Department of Homeland Security for the FY 2023 FEMA Building Resistance Infrastructure and Communities, or BRIC, Grant Program, for the drainage improvements and stream restoration at East Fire Tower Road. Item two is a contract award for the design of the Public Works Stormwater Pipe Improvement Project. Item three is an ordinance to amend the manual of fees to update fees as related to parking fees and parking penalties. Item four are updates to the city's financial policy, and item five are various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
I would like to request that we remove item number three from the consent agenda. Make that as a motion.
All right. Move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move right on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three is an ordinance to amend the manual of fees to update fees as related to parking fees and parking penalties. I will call on Deputy City Manager Michael Cowan to answer questions of the council.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Sure. And thank you so much for being willing to answer some additional questions. I just want to sort of preface this by saying, I think all of us have heard a lot of concerns about the new parking plan, and that my asking questions this evening of you is not to in any way disparage this plan, because it has been so, it has been very well thought out, and it has the best intentions to improve what has been a very irregular situation for parking uptown. So I just want to thank you and your staff for all the work you did on this program. If we could just take a minute, and I think the ordinance comes on Thursday.
No, the ordinance is this afternoon, is this evening, item number nine.
Oh, yes, there it is. Wait, that's leases of one year or less.
It's also the ordinance changes.
Okay, all right. So we're gonna talk about this twice tonight.
That's right.
Maybe this, this may cover both, both opportunities. We won't have to return to it. But what I, what I'd like to do by pulling it off the consent agenda is just take a few minutes, because we have heard from the public who are concerned about this. It does go into effect in 2023, our new year. And what I'd like to do is just take a minute to talk about the concerns that I've heard about everything from, my goodness, how do I use this app, to how is this gonna affect our businesses? And, and again, not to go back through the total discussion, but just if you could briefly hit the highlights of why you think this is going to work.
So, I mean, if it'd be okay, I'd like to actually, if it'd be okay, just to go through the, it's a quick presentation. That's okay. I'll just page down to it. Man, y'all got a lot to go through.
Okay, the item on the agenda tonight is really threefold. First of all, it's to amend Part II, Title 10, Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, which is the, the parking ordinance, as well as a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve leases of less than one year, which encompasses both the leases and the permits included within the parking plan. Also, an amendment to the manual fees to incorporate the, the rates for the parking plan as presented back in June. Council did approve the, the parking plan in, on June 27th of 2022 this year, and as Councilmember Blackburn stated, that the, the plan is scheduled to go into effect on January 1st of 2023. And tonight's amendment, along with the, the approval of the resolution for the city manager and the, the manual fees, is basically just to tie a bow on this, to put the city in the position, it'll be ready to move forward with the plan that council approved as of January 1st. Just to quickly go through the aspects, the, the, the plan as approved includes two types of leasing and permits. You've got a reserved, unreserved lease for residents of Uptown, those that actually live in Uptown, $70 and $50 respectively. The, the reserved lease is actually a lease for a parking space that is reserved specifically for the leaseholder. That the unreserved resident within Uptown can utilize any parking space within one of our surface-level parking lots at $50 a month unlimited. And we also have the allowance for an employee/employer permit, which would allow an employer to buy up to 10 parking permits for their employees and share each one of those amongst five of their employees at $20 a month. General public parking, we have the first hour no charge for on-street parking, and then each additional hour, a dollar each for a maximum of three. And then on the, the surface-level parking, you have 75 cents an hour, unlimited use of those, with again, the first hour being free. One of the things that I think we need to stress that probably you'll see a lot more in the next month as we continue to communicate out to the public, is that this will be charged in 15-minute increments after the first hour. So you, first hour free, and then charging 15-minute increments. And then there is no parking enforcement on the weekends. That includes both Saturday and Sunday, and even during the week that the, the enforcement of parking is being done, it'd be a maximum of until 7:00 PM every evening, Monday through Friday. Parking will be enforced through the parking app of Passport. This is a application that one can download onto their smartphone, and it allows for users to be able to log the hours on that app directly. Those that do not have a smartphone can also use computer registration, or they can actually have a dial-in number that they'll have available to them. There'll be a number on each of the parking signs in Uptown that users can, to dial in to actually log their, their parking time as well. And also, we have a validation program that's available to each of the different merchants that have a business uptown, where they can work with their customers to validate their parking for them and actually pay through, through the merchant themselves. Our parking staff will be going out over the next month and continuing to work with merchants. Those that do not wish to start this validation program right now have the option of coming onboard at any time that they wish, and our parking staff will be there to walk, work with them step by step to make sure that they can validate, set up a validation program for their customers. And that enforcement through the Passport app is actually done through the license plate number of the individual parking uptown. Just to look at the, a summary of the changes as included within the ordinance, we have a change in the daily enforcement. Currently, the ordinance states that the, the parking enforcement is from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. That's being changed through the ordinance as presented to council in, on June, from 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. The two-hour public parking has been repealed and replaced in the ordinance, again, as approved back in June, with on-street parking being a maximum of three hours, surface-level parking, unlimited hours. Change to the ordinance also includes the elimination of the E-Tag program that's been repealed through the ordinance and replaced with a permitting and lease system. You have the reserved and unreserved resident lease, as well as the employee/employer parking permits. And also, the ordinance as presented here tonight includes an appeals board created for the appeal of issued citations. The, also presented is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute those leases of one year or less, which again, is just for the reserved, unreserved, and the employee/employer permits. Now, with concerns to implementation, everything that we talk about here tonight is to allow our parking enforcement to begin this plan as of January 1st, but that does not mean that we start to issue citations on the first day of January. Week one through three will be a continuation of the information period, where we'll be continuing to distribute information to the general public to help better educate them on the parking plan. We'll have continued notification through social media, Twitter, and, and Facebook is what we've been utilizing the most. And then we'll have continued visits to our local merchants to assist them and educate them on the validation program. Start within week four and five, we'll start issuing warning citations, again, as another level of education to the general public. And then in week six, we will begin full implementation, working closely with the public, continuing to educate through this process. Actually, a full implementation does not just automatically mean we will not continue to work with the general public to educate. So with that, tonight, we would be asking council to not only approve the amendment to the ordinance, as well as the resolution authorizing the manager to approve leases of 12 months or less, but also the amendment to the manual fees to incorporate the new fee structure.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you so much for going through that. I think that's very good information. I'd just like to say, to sort of preface my, my view of where we are tonight, I did vote against this in June, and I have heard, continue to hear folks that are very concerned about this, specifically our businesses downtown. Yet, at the same time, I know that a lot of thought went into this plan, and that it's an effort to make our parking more uniform, and also an effort to acknowledge that Greenville is now a major city, and that other major cities do have this kind of a parking plan, they even use the same app, and that it's time for us to, you know, sort of sit at the, the grown-ups table when it comes to parking. And that may be a difficult pill to swallow, and maybe we go back and look at it. But I do think it's time to give this plan a chance, and I think that some of the fine points have been worked out. For instance, that you can pay by quarter hour, that there's flexibility in terms of working with businesses to perhaps allow them to figure out ways to validate parking. And just generally, the idea that I hear from staff, which is, this is not intended to be a punitive program, rather, this is a program that's intended to provide uniformity and fairness to parking. So in that spirit, and especially with the additional explanation that you've presented tonight, Deputy City Manager Cowan, I'm ready, I'm prepared to support it. I know we also talked about the idea of having a sort of a kiosk system, maybe where you could even pay. I don't know what the future might bring, but if we do need to do some, some modifications here and there, perhaps we can look at that.
I would say that, that a kiosk system will be within the parking deck, will be a gated system, a ticketed system, and allow for entry and exit into the, on the parking deck. And I think we go in this with the expectation that we're gonna make it work, and we're gonna do everything we can to educate the system moving forward. I think I, I made this point back in June, that what we're doing here is to establish a parking plan that will take this city council for the next 20, 30 years. Before we get ready to see the, the addition of a major hotel in our center city, a significant amount of market-rate housing, we're getting to see an influx of anywhere between 300 to 500 additional people within our uptown on a daily basis within the next 12 to 18 months. I think it's very important to go ahead and establish a framework that will allow us to carry forward a parking plan, that we do not have to make a significant amount of changes until at any given time. We just may make minor tweaks to be able to accommodate for where we are within our local economy at that point in time in our history.
And with that additional explanation, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
This is the manual of fees, correct?
Sure. Manual fees right now, and then it'll come later to the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Before council takes final action, I'd have a friendly amendment. The ordinance inadvertently says the ordinance shall become effective immediately. It should have said it becomes effective January 1st, and like Mr. Cowan stated. So just a friendly amendment.
Accepted.
I'll, I'll second the acceptance.
All right. Motion's been made, and properly seconded with the friendly amendment, by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we'll move on to new business. Item number six, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a presentation by the Historic Preservation Commission. Andrew Moorhead, Chair of the Commission, will provide that presentation. Mr. Moorhead?
Thank you very much. I want to actually start with some thank yous, because hopefully I don't run too long, but I'd like to thank Councilmember Daniels, who is our liaison. I'd like to thank city manager and her staff, most particularly Tony Parker, who we have run just ragged. So, and I also want to thank you all, which I will do again at the end, for your support of many of the things that we have brought for you. So, now let's see if I can make these work. Yes. So why, why are we, why are there 10 of, why are there enough of us who are crazy about history and about the city of, and about the city of Greenville to take on this task? It's because history is always a contentious thing. Who tells it? Who remembers it? If it's lost, it's very difficult to recover. So it's also a big part of what makes us Greenville. And so I think it's really important that in our job, that we think of ourselves as, as representing the entire city, that we're not just a neighborhood, or not just a local landmark, but that we're, our job is to advocate and to help market and to work with all of our partners. So, an example of that from fairly recent history, which many of you were on the, on the council for, was the Jones Lee House, which was, as you may remember, in not great condition. There's a shot of it, barely tell what it was. And the movement of that into the uptown, back into, further up into the uptown area, and now the reopening of that in the lovely restored condition of SoCo, I think is a major example of the kinds of things that working together is now positive for, for our community. Now, I'm going to get to a little bit of the boring part, which is the routine work that the city council, sorry, that the Historic Preservation Commission does, for the most part, are what we call certificates of appropriateness. And there are two of those. Major works are for big, big projects. Sometimes those are happy things. We worked with our partners at ECU to do a whole lot of work around the Dale House, to make sure that it's handicapped accessible, to work on landscaping, to work on restoring the porch. And then some of it's not so happy. The, there's an addition on one of the houses in the historic district right up the road. You can see a few pictures there of the addition that was on there. We had to work with those owners to demolish that addition and ensure that the inside of the house is restored. I also want to call out now and thank the code enforcement folks. This was actually a minimum housing code issue, and so an example of the HPC having to work with other city staff to ensure that this was done in a timely fashion. As you might imagine, we don't want anyone living in, in that bottom picture there. The minor works are more, you know, are you gonna repaint your house? Are you going to do it in a historically appropriate way? Are you gonna replace shingles? These are all just handled by the city staff. They have to be in accordance with the guidelines. And so, again, we work with those guidelines. We work with people. We've worked on expanding some of the allowable materials to ensure that folks actually can do the kind of work that we want to see, to preserve those historic landmarks. The commission, as a quasi-judicial body, has to undergo training, which we have done, continued to do, to make sure that Greenville retains our certified local government status. And then something you can hear a lot about now, our facade improvement grants. This is a partnership between the city, the HPC, and local landlords, where, and we're going to have a workshop in January, we're gonna have advertising, and what we do is we give out grants, recommend grants, you guys give out the grants, to owners of properties that wish to improve the streetscape by improving their facades so that they are congruent with the history, but also improve the look of our uptown area. I will come back to those in a second. I also want to talk very quickly about our partnerships. As I said, we represent the whole city in terms of preservation of history. So some of our partners have included working on the African-American Cultural Trail with the Convention and Visitors Bureau and others, on ensuring Brown Hill and Cooper's Field Cemeteries are preserved, that there's an appropriate gate, that there's appropriate signage that indicates the historical importance of that property. We put a resolution in front of y'all supporting public art in Paddock Park, right? Again, that's working with N.C. Arts Council. We want that area to be attractive. It's one of the first things you see as you, as you come in to that area. We put in grant applications, working with city staff, the African-American Cultural Heritage Action Fund, the Federal Historic Preservation Fund pass-through grants. Sadly, neither one of them came through this year, but we've got the feedback. We're hopeful that we will try again. And again, I already alluded to, we work often with ECU, Proctor Young House, the Dale House, the Alumni Center, Howard House, Ward House, to ensure that those properties are preserved and are put to good use, and continue to reflect well on the city and the university. The other big piece of business that we took on, and y'all funded this, was a survey and research report for eight properties as potential local landmarks. And again, this, this is preserved history. Four of those now have been sent forward to the State Historic Preservation Office, the Brown Hill, the Cherry Hill, the Minji's Fire Tower, which I'll come back to in a second, and the Moy House. Those reports, once they come back to us, will then go through a process of us making a recommendation to the council that those become local landmarks. And other than the Fire Tower, we anticipate that happening soon. The Flanagan Wagner House at 903 East Fifth Street did, in fact, get local landmark status this year. So, part of our routine business, but also something we're doing to expand the reach of historic preservation. It's a great picture of the Fire Tower. I know y'all are sad as we are that that's had to be demolished. It was structurally unsound. So I'll come back to that in the last slide. And I just wanted to do a couple of slides that... And I just wanted to do a couple of slides that demonstrate before and after shots at the facade improvement grant to remind you of just what y'all have put forward, right? Which one of those, if you drive into town, would you rather see? If you're thinking about being in business, which one of these would you rather occupy or be next door to? So again, January, we'll be putting out an advertising, we'll have a workshop, we will solicit, we will solicit the, you know, funds, the grants, and we will evaluate and make recommendations to y'all. I have a feeling that we're going to have some conversation about frankly whether that those grants need to be bigger and even if we give fewer, because as you all know, historic construction is expensive and construction in general is not cheap these days. So here's the last slide of my report. A couple of things, I'm going to do the easier one first, easier too. Historical marker for Minji's Fire Tower, right? We're really sad it had to be demolished. Fortunately, we do have a massive report full of information about that fire tower, the history of how it came to be, who funded it, the rough and ready firemen who also trained there, part of the African American Cultural Trail, we hope. So we have a big amount, we have a lot of research and we're working with city staff on making some recommendations about appropriate historical marker that will hopefully make that an attraction as we move forward and preserve this super important piece of history. The other thing is that we are happy to volunteer. Again, we have a lot of information sitting around from our research into these historic things and the owners of these places. And I strongly encourage the council to think about what we can do to celebrate the 250th celebration of Greenville's founding. And we are happy to provide information. We can't really do much more than that, but we would happily work because again, Historic Preservation Commission, we would like to see something done around, around the celebration of Greenville's founding. The other one, so signage and College View Resolution. This, I think, is something I just want to clarify very carefully. The HPC put forward a resolution that there should be some signage installed for the neighborhood. We did not do that at behest of any particular members of the neighborhood. That was simply a, the signage there has been, how shall I put this? Sometime reused in places, is missing, does not necessarily clearly indicate anymore that that is an important historic district in terms of who used to live there, its proximity to the university. So we weren't quite sure when the staff report came out that the neighborhood should pay for it, that who it was that that was intended for, because we did not make a recommendation on behalf of homeowners there, you know, the landlords, anyone in particular. So we are happy to do what we can to help resolve that situation and have conversations around it. But we appreciate that it costs money. We also think that this and our other four historic districts in the city should have appropriate signage to indicate why they're important and to make them into attractions. So elegant moment there, but that's, we had some questions aimed at us. Other than that, again, thank you very much for your support. I'll happily take any questions. I have no idea if that was too fast, too slow, or about right, so.
It's great.
All right.
It was great. So before anybody asks any serious questions, what was the blue structure that's now the sweet store or whatever, right there?
There's a radio station on it.
Was that a radio station?
That's a good question.
It was a gym.
It was a gym. So, yeah, so they, that's an example of the kind of work that goes into it, right? You have to kind of go back, do some looking at the appropriate kinds of windows, the architectural motifs that made that. And again, someone spent a lot of money but did a darn good job and now it's an attraction and not an eyesore, so.
Oh, it certainly is.
This is the kind of thing that we very much want for our city.
Yeah. Thank you.
So there's centennials and then bicentennials.
Don't make me pronounce it. I think it's a semi-scent potential. Anyway, something like that. Semi-sent, anyway, I'll never get it right.
Exactly what else?
I've seen it spelled out a half dozen times and I still can't say it. But I mean, 250 years is a long time and I think we should celebrate it. And we're happy to provide any, any support we can on that front in terms of information and the history.
Go ahead and give us the date.
What's that?
Go ahead and tell us when it is.
Well, we've got about two years, so.
Some of us have been there here for years, so two years goes quick.
It says 1774, so I guess that'll be.
It's a little bit interesting as to what the actual date is, right? Because we changed the name, we've changed the spelling, but that's sort of the consensus number, so we should go with it.
Cool. Any questions, comments?
I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that you put in to the Historic Preservation Committee. Thank you for your presentation, excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And for going above and beyond.
Well, and thank you and thank you. And as I'm sure you all had, COVID caused some real kinks in how things went for the last few years and we're happy to be back operating at as close to full capacity as we can, so. Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate all you do. All right, let's move on to item number seven, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got to go fill my list here. Item number seven is the results of the financial audit for fiscal year ending June 30th of 2022, including review of the FY 2223 available fund balance. I'll call forward Financial Services Director Byron Hayes, as well as April Adams with Cherry Beckett for that presentation.
What'd you find on the west?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, rather. This is the results of the 2122 financial audit. Staff is happy to report that the audit is complete and Cherry Beckett issued an unmodified opinion for our financial statements for the fiscal year ending in 2022. An unmodified opinion is the best audit opinion that can be issued during a financial audit. Some additional highlights, the staff did continue in the preparation of their own financial statements for the third consecutive year. And staff also received the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the state did accept the corrective action and mitigation plan surrounding the Pell Bill Audit Finding from the previous fiscal year. Some additional highlights, there were no material weaknesses or issues of material noncompliance or significant deficiencies in our financial statements, our federal awards or our state awards. In other words, no findings for this current fiscal year. However, we did have one immaterial overstatement of our rescue accounts receivable, which will be corrected in the current year. And so I will turn another section's presentation over to audit partner April Adams with Cherry Beckett.
I was getting ready to cut you off, but I figured I'd let you go do your victory lap around.
Yes, I appreciate it.
I like to spear it. So good evening. I am excited to be here to give you the audit results. And they're on time, which has been the first time in at least the last two years. So that's a great accomplishment to be preparing your own financial statements and getting your audit in on time. All right, so first up is just to talk about the client service team. Of course, I'm a returning member, you've seen my face before, but you did have a couple of sets of new eyes on these statements and through the audit, so that's always good and fun for everybody. But Scott Anderson was the second reviewer, so our firm requires every audit that gets audited to be reviewed by a second partner before it goes out. And so Scott was the new set, fresh eyes that reviewed it for you this year. Also Courtney Jackson joined the team. She replaced Carleen Comratt, who had been the audit manager for a number of years. She retired and so Courtney joined the team and then Carly Long, who is now Carly Coleman, continued as your senior. So what I'd like to cover with you tonight is to go over the audit results, just as Byron just did, talk a little bit about the single audit, which is the administration of your federal and state dollars, grant dollars, touch on internal controls and what they are as a part of the audit. I've got the prior year findings to follow up on that, which Byron also just covered. I want to talk a second on corrected and uncorrected misstatements. So these are the audit adjustments that occurred through the audit or that were noted. And then I've got a whole bunch of required communications that go along with the part of the audit. I'm going to move through those as fast as I can and just point any of those that are, I deem really important. And then I've got other matters which just talk about our opinion of the statements and what they, how they apply within the document and then upcoming changes as far as new standards or new accounting standards. So the results of the audit, we did issue the audit dated November 28th, 2022. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And then we also issued three other reports as a part of the audit. And so the first one would be the Yellow Book Report. This is our opinion in relation to the governmental auditing standards. And then the last two reports are the compliance reports for your federal and state dollars. So for single audit, we did four major programs this year as a part of the audit. That means that we are evaluating each one of these programs listed here for the 14 different compliance requirements, whichever ones are directed material, so we go in and look and make sure that they're, got internal controls around the administration as well as adhering to those compliance requirements. And as Byron mentioned, there's no findings related to any of that, so all the grants are being administered as they should. As far as internal controls for the audit, we don't actually opine on internal controls as a part of the audit, but we do do a lot of work where we're required to. So we get all the policies and procedures, we look through that, we actually do some testing. And all we do is either report whether there's deficiencies or not as a part of the audit. So no findings or deficiencies noted in the current year, but we did have some last year. And so I just wanted to report to you that those deficiencies have been cleared in the current year, so no issues overall now, which is great. Uncorrected and corrected misstatements, these happen to do with the adjustments. So as the, as we start to conduct the audit, a trial balance is provided to us to audit against is how those numbers come to be within your financial statement. And any adjustments that come about during that process from the time the trial balance is given to us, just when we issue, we report to you any adjustments that come about. So there's two different types of adjustments. One is corrected adjustments, ones that actually got booked and changed from the trial balance to where the report got issued. There's none of those, but we did have one, what we call an uncorrected misstatement. And this is one where, as Byron mentioned, there was an overstatement of the allowance related to the accounts receivable for the ambulance. And so you can see the amount here is 1.2 million. And what we're saying here is that this wasn't booked in the current year, but we still deem your financial statements to be materially correct. All right, so the next couple of slides are all about this required communication as a part of your audit. So the first one is just to let you know that the city did implement a new accounting standard in the current year, one pertaining to leases. And so what this did is it added to your balance sheet a lease receivable and deferred revenues related to a lease, to your lease receivables. And then it also added to your fixed assets a right to use leased assets for various different assets that the city is leasing from other entities, as well as an obligation for the payment of those leases in the future. So you see a lot of things grossing up and showing up on your balance sheet while the normal flow through of the current year, as far as leases, you're receiving cash, that is always occurring, so that's still showing up on the income statement side. As far as related parties, we are required to report to you if we identify any significant related party transactions during the audit. We're not aware of any as far as city, so that's what this slide is indicating to you. As far as significant unusual transactions, we were not made aware or found any significant unusual transactions as a part of the audit. There are quite a bit of estimates that exist within your financial statements. The biggest ones deal with your post, your benefits for your retirees, so your pension liability as well as your other health, other post, other, OPEB, other post employment benefits, so your health insurance for your retirees. And then there's several others listed on the slide that we're required to point out to you. All of the disclosures are in your financial statements, we believe to be neutral, consistent, and clear and easy to read and understand. And then as far as independence, we, as your auditors are required to be independent and maintain independence throughout the entire audit. And we're required to evaluate if we perform any what we call non-attest services to evaluate how that impacts our ability to stay independent. We do perform, complete the appropriate sections of the data collection form, which is where we report the findings as a part of our audit and what programs we audited as major for the federal grants. We put that together, management reviews it, and then we submit it together. So other than that, we've had no issues with maintaining our independence. All right, some other required communications. We had no difficulties throughout the audit with management. We had no disagreements with management throughout the audit. We didn't consult any other auditors as a part of our audit and management did sign the rep letter for us with a number of representations that we rely on as a part of our audit. We're not aware that management consulted any other auditors as a part of this process. There are no other findings or other issues, no fraud or illegal acts, and no going concern. We do believe the city will be in business 12 months from the end of November. As far as other matters, these just point out to you that while we issue an opinion on the financial statements, those, if you were to open up the report and look, there's a set of statements that are up front and then there's the footnotes and then there's statements behind, this dictates what level of opinion we give on that back information because the opinion is on the front statements and there's an in relation to opinion or no opinion on some of the other information that's in that report. As far as upcoming financial statement changes, these are, every time Gatsby issues new accounting standards, the city has to take those into account and figure out how they impact financial reporting. I've listed four here. Some will have no impact, some will have minimal, and some will, some will have a big impact and be difficult to implement. So we are looking out forward ahead of those and working with management to figure out how to make sure we get those addressed properly. And I'll be glad to take any questions.
All right. Any questions? That was easy, wasn't it?
I will just do the one confirmation because I think it's valuable to recognize this about staff is that the numbers they gave you at the beginning ended up being the numbers that went in the financial report, right?
That's correct.
There have been times in the distant past in the city when the numbers that were presented to the auditors had to be, you know, changed around quite a bit before they could actually be published as official financial statements. And I think it speaks to staff's expertise and diligence that, you know, they gave them their numbers, the auditors went through them and audited them, and then they're publishing those numbers, those original numbers as the financial report. So that's well done. Thank you.
I think Byron's.
So in addition to that, I'll just briefly go over the year-end results of the general fund and fund balance. So the general fund, we did see a surplus of about $3.3 million. Expenses were within 3% of revenues for the current fiscal year, or for last fiscal year. Breaking down those revenues by type, about 71% of our total revenues come from property tax and sales tax. And looking at that a little bit further by type, we do see that our other taxes category, consisting mainly of our sales taxes, did increase 10.5% from the previous fiscal year, which exceeded our budget by about 17 and a half percent. So sales tax was a booming, booming revenue for us this current, for the previous fiscal year. Looking at our expenses by type, our public safety departments make up about 48% of our total expenses for the general fund. And of all of our categories, they're, out of all of our different functions, all of them finished under budget for the current, or for the previous fiscal year in those expenses, those expense categories. Looking at general fund fund balance, general fund fund balance also increased $3.3 million from '21 to '22. Looking at the fund balance of about $30 million in the five different categories, with unassigned being the largest category at $18.5 million. And then going into our available fund balance calculation, at the end of the fiscal year, our fund balance available for appropriation based on the new formula, as has been given to us as guidance from the local government commission, comes in at about $21.2 million, which is about 23.13% of total expenditures in the general fund. And then our 20% floor of those total expenditures end up being an available fund balance of $18.3 million. And so looking at the designations for the current fiscal year, of the $21.2 million that we have available for appropriation, $150,000 has been appropriated as part of the '23 budget and an additional $900,000 broken out by $500,000 for the part of grant match, as well as $400,000 for the Wildwood Trail development have also been designated as. as department carryover from last year to the current fiscal year, which leaves us with just over $20 million. And compare that to our floor, that leaves us with an unassigned available fund balance of, of just under 22% for the current fiscal year. And in terms of next steps, as, as Ms. Adams said, the audit has been submitted to the local government commission, and we will be submitting for the next year's certificate of achievements in financial reporting. And I just would like to take, take the opportunity to thank Cherry Beckett, as well as all the other department, all the other departments and city staff that have been involved in this audit process in order to make sure it was successful for the current fiscal year. And that is the end of my report. Do you all have any questions?
Anybody got anything?
I do want to say, you know, thank you, Byron, and thank you to everybody at the Financial Services Department for all the hard work that you guys do. I think it's pretty incredible to be able to have the report that we just received from Cherry Beckett about how, how quality the, the reporting is, the audit went, and how great of a job that you guys do as a staff. And I know in years past, prior to you being here, you know, it wasn't that, it wasn't the case. And I think that it speaks volume with your leadership and everybody in the Financial Services Department for the hard work that you guys do on a day-to-day basis. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I can't do it without them. It's all their, their solid work that allows us to be successful.
You've got a great team.
They are.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much. Move on to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is the award of a construction contract to TA Loving Company for a bid package A of the Wildwood Park Bridges and Boardwalks. I'll call for Recreation and Parks Director Don Octagon for that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. You've got a great team, too.
Yeah, cool. Byron, Byron put the pressure on. I gotta do as well as he did. So tonight we are presenting a construction contract to TA Loving for the enhancements of the East Side Wildwood Park Trails. Before we go into the details of that contract, I do want to kind of provide a quick update of where we are with Wildwood Park in general. As we know, the park opened in October 2021. It's currently open seven days a week, sunrise and sunset, and is being actively used pretty much every day for trails that are currently out there, plus fishing. There's much, much more to come. Several programs have been held since this opened, and various new events. We're excited to announce our plan for 2023, which we will be sharing those early on in January or February of next year. Staff continue to work on various projects to implement the council-adopted development plan, which was adopted in October 2021. So next slide just reviews. Well, this shows Wildwood Park in relation to River Park North. Wildwood Vision is to enhance the outdoor recreational opportunities for our community, including a comprehensive trail system that will eventually connect to River Park North, which is the ultimate goal and ultimate vision of the trail system at Wildwood Park. And we'll talk a little bit about that here in a few minutes as well. So this slide overviews our current projects that are in progress. We're currently working on the Welcome Center and Playground. If you've been out there lately, you can see the, the Welcome Center and how it's going to sit in between the two shelters. Also, early February, we'll start the construction of the playground. Also under construction is the Chris Smith Mountain Bike Trails, along, along with the Bicycle Skills Course and Pump Track. Of course, tonight, we'll hear about the Boardwalk and Bridge, and also the connection that will connect East Parcel of Wildwood with the West Parcel. Currently in design is the Connection Two, River Park North, which will consist of a boardwalk, a raised boardwalk trail system. And right now, we're looking at that project and being reviewed for possible public advertising for bids in 2023. And lastly, we are currently working on the design of the restroom, parking, and challenge course that will be located north of the east side of the lake. The restroom and parking will certainly support the Bicycle Skills Course and Pump Track, but also the events that we have planned out of the park next year. So hopefully, that, that design started now. So hopefully, in about eight to nine months, we'll have that design completed. And then we'll look forward to the next steps with that project as well. This just shows our, the adopted master plan. What I wanted to show here tonight is during the development of the park plan, a survey was conducted as far as a community engagement component. The top 10 requests and amenities are shown here. And as you can see, we've, we've highlighted the walk and run trails, which supports the project that we're about to, to showcase tonight. All right. So now to the current gen item. So Wildwood Park Bridge and Boardwalk Connections, of course, includes the bridge over the existing canal that leads to the Tar River, and also the connection under Highway 264 and Greenville Boulevard. This slide shows a detail of the connection under Greenville Boulevard there to your left, and also the bridge connection. So the connection underneath Greenville Boulevard include a sidewalk that will connect the east loop with the west loop. It will be raised to, to avoid normal floodwaters when the floodwaters come up, but it could be inundated at some time. But the sidewalk is, is built to, to last floodwaters, yeah, because we know it's going to eventually flood at some point. This next slide shows a little more detail regarding the Boardwalk and Bridge over the canal. Seen here to your left, which is south of Wildwood Park, is the Tar River, showing the canal entering to the park. Shown here is where the existing Phase One Trail ends. So everything you see in between the existing Phase One Trail ends signs are, is what this project will, will complete. This will include, well, you see the Sandy Beach also. Sandy Beach is, is to your right as you were going over Greenville Boulevard and going over the Tar River. This, the boardwalk will be a raised boardwalk. It will include an overlooked fishing area as well as a stair system. Again, about where the stairs are, the boardwalk will be about eight to 10 feet above of ground. So the, the raised boardwalk stairs will lead to the, to a primitive trail that will lead, that will provide further access to the Sandy Beach that we currently see. Walkers can get to Sandy Beach now, but this will provide easier access for all. Then, of course, we've got the, the bridge, which will provide a clearance of 12 feet during average river depth, which will allow boats to continue access to the river, the lake inside Wildwood, which we hope to see increase as we start activating the park Information about the bid phase, the project was first advertised in March 2022. This project was advertised multiple times before a suitable bid received on September 16th. During the, the advertising period and then the multiple advertising periods, some of the challenges shared by contractors included labor shortages, of course, inflation, construction demand. There's a lot of projects going on at the same time, but with labor shortages, it made it difficult. And of course, the accessibility of the project and proximity to the river. Original bid, base bid from TA Loving submitted was approximately $4.7 million. This slide overview's the project funding. Again, the original base bid was approximately $4.7 million. After negotiations with TA Loving, which included a modification to the scope of work, a revised contract price of just over 300, $3.5 million was decided. And as important to note, this funding for the project also includes a private commitment of just over $780,000. Timeline, if approved, TA Loving is scheduled to begin, begin the project in February 2023. City staff will work with TA Loving to expedite the construction time for a planned opening in spring, summer 2024. Our goal is to get this project moving and help them complete it in a timely fashion. This next slide, I just want to acknowledge a few partners in this project. Obviously, the project would not, and the progress we see at Wildwood Park today would not be possible without the commitment of the mayor, city council, city manager's office. And this park is certainly an asset to the Greenville community. It will only increase in usage, usage as these projects are completed, as you've heard about tonight. Parks Planner Mark Nottingham has done a great job on all the projects, and he will continue to work with the various project partners to continue the development of Wildwood that will further activate our park and work with our recreation staff. The park, of course, and the east side trail that we just reviewed would also not be possible without the support of Mr. Eddie Smith, owner of Grady White Boats. Mr. Smith's been a tremendous partner and supporter of Wildwood Park, beginning with the acquisition of both the west side and east side properties. We're very grateful for his support, continued support, as it has helped create a destination park, which begin next summer will provide a various outdoor recreational opportunities for our community and others across eastern Oklahoma, which will only increase the visitors to our, our great city. Also, as part of this project, the Boardwalk and Bridge Project, TA Loving will also be recognized as a partner, as a, as a donor. They are committed to this project and will work closely with city staff to ensure the project is completed efficiently and effectively. Recreation's staff look forward to continue these great partnerships to help continue to the growth of Wildwood Park. And therefore, we recommend approval of the construction contract for the enhancements of the east side of Wildwood Park Trails to TA Loving for approximately $3.5 million. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Octagon?
Councilmember Blackburn.
I do. Thank you very much for that presentation. I love the connectivity. I love the goal of connecting to River Park North, and you know where I'm headed. How do we, or is it, is it, is it useful to think about just expanding that vision to have connectivity back to the other side of the river? Is there any way, because you're getting under the Brit, you're getting under the, you know, Greenville Boulevard, it would be really nice to figure out a way to, to connect our greenway to that system, to get our greenway. You, you said, you talked about the east side. You know, I'm thinking east side park, get those trails to east side park. So it's a greenway. Is that something that within this framework could be part of that long-term vision, some more connectivity?
So we currently work with NPO, Elliot, Elliot, with the, and so we're currently working on transportation plans, as far as the city's overall transportation plan. I know there's connection possibilities throughout, so we will certainly keep that. It's a possibility to keep continuing looking at and look at the feasibility, if that can happen.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
I appreciate the presentation. It's exciting to hear about, you know, more progress at that park. Did you say eight to 12 feet of clearance on that canal bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be 12 feet when the river's at the normal depth.
Okay. Gotcha. 12 feet at normal. Okay. Awesome. All right. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Move to approve. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Well, now move on to item number nine. Adam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is an ordinance to amend Part II Title 10, Chapter 2 of the City of Greenville Code of Ordinances and Resolution authorizing the city manager and/or the manager's designee to execute leases of one year or less. Deputy City Manager Michael Cowan is available for any additional questions. We did speak about this a few minutes ago.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Deputy Cowan? Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We'll now move on to item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a discussion on changes to the 500-foot rule for bars and nightclubs. Chief Planner Chantae Gooby has that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening. This is a follow-up from your November 7 workshop. Staff brought to you at that time, an update on the 500-foot rule. And it was essentially, the question is, is would council like to move forward with adopting the rules for Bar 2022, or basically what we're calling the 500-foot rule? And this is an item that council would also need to vote on. So I've got my little slide here, letting you know that you need to vote. And then one of the other things that I just wanted to just mention again is staff mentioned about doing the alcohol sales as an accessory use. You gave us the thumbs up on that. So we're, staff's going to take that text amendment to PNC this month, which is December 20th. With that, unless you have any questions, then I am just going to sit back down.
All right. Any questions? Councilmember Blackburn.
I have a question of procedure. My understanding is that 500-foot was going to go back to planning and zoning, maybe this month, and come back to council in January.
We have to, don't we have to move forward before that process starts?
Right.
You have to give direction that if we want to move forward, we'd have to go to PNC and then to us, right?
Right. But at the, when we discussed this with the council in November, you, the council voted or asked us to bring this back to you for a discussion at this meeting, for the council to give us direction about how to proceed. We, you did give us clear direction related to the accessory use. So this item comes back tonight for, for the council to say how you would like us to proceed. And once you do that, we can take it forward. But it will still have to go to PNC and then back to council.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I guess before we get started, I would like to add, I would like to say that we did have what I thought was just a really good conversation when we talked about this previously, and we talked about accessory use. In my understanding is that accessory use is going to allow those kinds of businesses that had presented proposals. For instance, I think there's a bookstore that wanted to sell drinks. Accessory use allows, allows you to have a business of, of whatever it may be. And you can also sell drinks, which really covers those proposals that we heard. And I was actually very excited to hear about this possibility because it really gave us the flexibility to have more alcohol without having it be, this is an exclusively alcohol-only business. It allowed that kind of balance and diversity that I think makes a healthy downtown. So I was, I was very excited to hear that and some of the other changes that have occurred that will, that will really give us flexibility we have right now without changing anything.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Mayor. Councilmember Bell?
Chantae, I wish it was going to be that easy for you, but if you could pop up here, I just, I got.
I'm coming back Thursday. Give me a break.
All right. At the bottom, we've got a double asterisk, and it says substantive changes to go back to PNC. Do you have a slide available where you can put where Bar 22 currently sits?
I do.
Okay.
I put them in my back pocket, so to speak.
So no changes to what this slide would say would not require going back to PNC, or it would?
Well, we still, because we, if you remember, we talked a little bit about the changes in North Carolina general statutes with the difference between a restaurant and a bar or a club. Also, we've had to tweak some of the language that we had included that now we can't include. So essentially, this, what, what PNC saw is still changed. So it still needs to go back to them. So that's why we've got those little asterisks for you.
So it's got to go back either way?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
It's, right now, your opportunity is, is do you want it to, or do you just want to let it sit?
So Councilmember Bell, would you like Ms. Gooby to go back through, to briefly go through, back through what the most recent proposal is about Bar 22?
Yeah, just if we're gonna, if we're gonna, you know, discuss it, I think that we should all make sure that we're all on the same page.
I think she has those on this.
I have those. So again, this is the Bar 2022 definition. It is a new use with standards. Again, it's a principal use for entertainment. Right now, we have it that it would have to be less than 3,500 square feet. It can have live-recorded amplified music, dance show, dance area. It would require special use permit from the Board of Adjustment. If there is amplified entertainment, now this is one of the things we got to talk about here. Right now, we've talked about amplified entertainment after 11 o'clock, but we know that we cannot do anything with hours of operation. But this is how it stands. So if they do have amplified entertainment, this would be the professional security that they would have to have. This is broken up into occupancy of the building. So for every 100, they have to have personnel. It doesn't matter if only five people are there that night. We have to do it off of occupancy. Would require a security plan approved by Greenville Police Department. There would need to be a lighting plan. There are no parking requirements because we've talked about this being downtown. They would use apps and software to detect fake IDs. They would comply with the current building codes and safety standards, and there is no separation between uses or districts. This is the enforcement standards that we talked about. This is a brand-new piece. So PNC has not seen this. Again, this is what would bring them back to Board of Adjustment for a potential modification or revocation of their permit. And then this is the current boundary that we have talked about. So everything within that yellow line would be where a Bar 2022 could be. And that is it. I'll be happy to answer any questions from that.
Could you just go back to that slide that was dealing with occupancy and security?
Sure. Are, are you talking about the one with the, the blue table?
Yes, the chart.
Okay. There you go.
And this may be a less question, less Everett. 400 to 500 people couldn't, couldn't go in a 3,500-square-foot building, right?
Exactly. And that is going to sort of remedy.
She only, she only last two answers.
I'm being chief building inspector tonight. That, that in and of itself is going to remedy itself when you start talking about having a cap at 3,500 people.
Yeah, just, just generally roughly, we're not going to hold you to it specifically, but roughly how many people could fit in a 3,500? roughly, how many people could fit in a 3,500-square-foot building, like the absolute highest number?
All right, being building inspector, it depends on how the building is laid out. But generally speaking, no, you are not going to get 500 people within that layout.
Did you get 250?
250 to maybe 300, I'm guessing.
And that'd be really high-end if it was an empty building.
Yeah, you have to have room for bar, restrooms. By the time you start calculating the storage and everything else, every time you do that, it cuts down on the full occupant load of the dance floor or usable area by the patrons.
And that's on a max-size building of 3,500?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm hiring you as building inspector.
It's the only questions that I have.
Any other questions, comments by the council? Councilmember Daniels?
What is the appeals process once they start receiving violations?
So I'm going to jump ahead. So are you saying the appeal as if when staff would take the permit back to Board of Adjustment and what happens there, or if it's revoked from Board of Adjustment?
If it's revoked.
Then that would go to Superior Court.
Oh, interesting, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Smiley?
So an act of, an approval from council now would send this to PNC for their process, additional public input and hearings, a recommendation that would come back to us for action, either to make it an ordinance or turn it down.
That is correct, and basically what I have given you tonight, that would be what would go to PNC.
I move we forward the proposal to PNC for those actions.
Second. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion before we vote?
I thought this was going to be a discussion about direction forward. I wasn't aware that we were just going to take the ordinance and have an up or down vote on it tonight. Nor do I think the public was aware that's what we were going to be doing.
Because council, it's not an up or down vote on the ordinance tonight. Council is voting to initiate the process, to restart the process on the Bar 2022 proposal. So to go back to PNC for comment, and so by you voting tonight, you're not saying you're in favor of it or against it. You're voting to initiate the process. It will go back to PNC for comment, then will come to council for action. And the public will be heard at both hearings.
Okay, all right, and I appreciate that clarification. I'd just like to say that, again, going back to the meeting we had, that was very positive and productive, where we realized that we had a lot of flexibility. Moreover, the General Assembly has now given us the ability to have restaurants operate at only 30% food sales. So that is not a very, that's not a very difficult sort of level to reach. So if you're selling, you know, if you've got 30% food sales and you can do the alcohol, so I don't, you know, we have so much more flexibility now. And really, just going back to why this was passed in the first place. I mean, this is what's happened to crime, specifically violent crime, in our downtown since this ordinance was passed. This has really helped restore a healthy balance of businesses to our downtown that include bars. There is nothing inherently wrong with the bar, and indeed, that is part of Greenville's culture, and it's a way that you have fun in our community, just as in any community. The issue was that there was a high concentration, and that's what this ordinance was designed to address, was the concentration never intended to stop bars. It was intended to create a healthy balance of businesses, which we are now getting downtown. We have, ECU has offices downtown. We have restaurants downtown. We have more clothing stores downtown. We have a nice balance. Now, there are other businesses that we can have downtown, such as a record store that can sell drinks, a bookstore that can sell drinks. You can do that martini bar, just sell a little bit of food. So for us to go back on something that has been so effective for our community, I have to ask the question, why would we consider that? Thank you.
If I may, I think it's unfair to say that that's the only reason that crime has decreased. I think there's been an increase in lighting. I think there's been an increase in police presence. A lot of things have changed, and I think that we need to look at the entire picture as far as the changes and the growth that is happening down there.
Any other comments before we vote? All right. See none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay. Motion passes five one.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to the review of the December 8, 2022 city council agenda. Madam Manager.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, during the public comment period, Citizen Ms. Lenora passed out something that, after review by the city attorney, of the view that it's protected by HIPAA. And I would ask that you adopt a motion returning those documents back to the city attorney's office and authorize us to either redact it or to destroy it. It's HIPAA information.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Pass them to the left or to the right.
And Mayor, at the December 8 meeting, the council will consider appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay. The first board that we have is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn?
Oh, my goodness. I just appointed someone to that. Bill Redding, did that last month.
I'll go back and look. There might be one more, but I will double-check that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did the list this time, not Crystal, so.
Yeah, okay, just let me know, because I think I did that last month.
Sure, I will double-check that for you. The next board is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, I'm still working on that.
Okay. The next board is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Protem Glover?
I'm not going to know, because I didn't have to give me any and won't leave until today.
Okay. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee. Councilmember Blackburn?
Oh, my goodness, let me continue that one, too.
Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor Connolly?
Less is more. I'm working on that one.
You always get more with less.
And finally, we have the Youth Council. Mayor Protem Glover?
I'm waiting.
Okay. All right, and that concludes appointments to your regular boards, and the next is the appointment to the Animal Control Appeal Board, which anyone can nominate.
Any headway with that?
I'm still working, and now Councilmember Daniels is also working, so.
I've contacted several beds, too, so nothing yet.
All right, that concludes the appointments. Madam Manager.
The council will, the council will also hold various public hearings to include the following. An ordinance to annex Parkside Bluff, Lot B, involving 1.402 acres located along the northern right-of-way of Easton Street and west of Parkside Drive. Item number five is an ordinance requested by the City of Greenville for the use and benefit of Greenville Utilities Commission to rezone 32.30 acres located roughly between Runford Road and Pactola's Highway and west of Mills Road from RA 20 and R6 to Industry. Item six is an ordinance requested by Man Farms LLC to rezone 4.48 acres located at the current terminus of Oak Down Way from OR Office Residential to CG General Commercial. Ordinance number seven is requested by Four Life Properties LLC to amend the future land use and character map for 90.378 acres from the industrial logistics and potential conservation open space categories to the traditional neighborhood medium-to-high-density category for Track One, which is 87 acres, and potential conservation open space for category for Track Two, which is 3.319 acres from the property located along the western right-of-way of Allen Road and adjacent to the Pitt County landfill. Item number eight is a resolution to close South Park Drive. Item number nine is the first public hearing for the 23-27 consolidated plan. And the final item of business will be the approval of sale for the former Greenville Utilities Commission Operations Center located on Mumford Road, consisting of 12 parcels. That's the council agenda for December the 8th, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Now move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, this evening, to thank our staff of financial services, recreation and parks, and planning. This evening, the staff provided some wonderful sort of closure on items, including our annual audit, the approval of the contract for the bridges and boardwalks, and some step forward on the resolution of the 500-foot rule. That really represents countless hours of staff time preparing and researching the item and walking both staff and the council through it. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank the, thank our staff for that hard work, because it really does reflect some conclusion on some of those heavy-duty items. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, we'll now move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. Councilmember Daniels?
I'd like to echo what our city manager said, to thank our staff for all the hard work that you do every day. I'd also like to thank the HBC for their presentation tonight, and I'd like to say happy 10th birthday to my grandson Jalen tomorrow.
Happy birthday. All right, Councilmember Blackburn?
Thank you. I would just like to take a few minutes tonight to address some of the violence that has taken place in our nation and some unfortunate hate speech that has occurred in our own community, and I think it's very important to support and to recognize members of the LGBTQ community here in Greenville, as well as wherever they are. We face a perilous and a treacherous time in our country right now, because for many years, we've made progress. People who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender have struggled and continue to struggle for recognition. They simply want to be seen as human beings, to have basic human rights. So yes, we can celebrate some progress, such as the recognition of gay marriage, but we also continue to see terrifying evidence of hatred. That evidence is hatred that we see directed at people for one reason, because of the person that they love. How did we end up in this great nation of ours with people so filled with hate and anger at others because of who they love, that they would violently attack them? People who become so enraged with the way people express their sense of gender, that they would call for them to be killed. At the Club Q in Colorado Springs, five people were murdered. Before that, 49 people were killed at Pults, a gay club in Orlando, Florida, when a shooter opened fire. Unfortunately, locally, last week, in the Daily Reflector, the editors made a large error, for which they have since apologized. The Daily Reflector published hate speech directed at members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, or LGBTQ. This item of hate speech was submitted anonymously to the newspaper for the Bless Your Heart column. It said words to the effect of, quote, "The LGBTQ community has pushed against the rights of straight folks. Keep pushing, and more shootings and deaths will follow," end quote. This item threatening gun violence should never have seen daylight. Moreover, the person who wrote these horrifying lines and sent them to the Daily Reflector called for people to die simply because of whom they love. Can you imagine evil so vile that it would kill because of love? Moreover, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people have never pushed against the rights of straight people. To the contrary, they simply want to be treated as equal human beings, with the same right to exist as heterosexual people. As a straight person, I lose nothing when my gay friend has his full human rights, and when my lesbian friend can marry who they want to, or when my queer friend can dress how they want to. Indeed, I gain, and I have gained so much humanity because of my friends and family who are LGBTQ. We need, all of us, to remain vigilant toward people who want to hurt any marginalized people in our society. These members of our society who face discrimination and threats simply because of the innocent desire to exist, to be who they are, they deserve our love and our support. And may we all recognize and refuse to air hate speech of this or any kind. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Robinson?
Mayor, no comments, and thank you for the opportunity.
All right, Councilmember Bell?
No comments.
Mayor Protem Glover? Wow. All right, I have some comments. I want to say congratulations to our ECU Pirates, are going to be going to the Birmingham Bowl. They're going to be playing on December 27th against Coastal Carolina, so hopefully we'll win the battle of the Carolinas. So congratulations to them, congratulations to our basketball team. I think they won this last weekend, too. Hopefully, they'll continue to play really well. I think that's about it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
We are adjourned.